If all town meeting members can turn your attention to the V voter to mark yourself as present to confirm if we have a quorum. Roll call is open on your V voter screen. We'll give you 30 seconds. Town meeting requiring 100 members for quorum and having 139 in attendance. I see there is sufficient number of members present to permit us to open, and I so do declare. On that note, I ask that those who would like to join me to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may please be seated. A couple items I want to just go over with before we begin. If you request to speak on V voter and see the received note and hit request again to speak, it will remove you from the line. So you need to stay patient, and if you have any questions or want an update and confirmation that your request to speak has been received, the Q and A is an appropriate way to reach the deputy moderator to ask this question. This is, we find this is within the technology questions. Alls you need to say is, do you see me online? As the moderator, I will continue to provide the count of speakers in line, especially if someone moves the vote. I also want to remind members of the point of order. This allows a member to raise a question of order if they feel there has been a breach of rules or conduct of the meeting. Again, a breach of rules or conduct of the meeting only. We are to never attack or make any allusions to the motives of members of this body, and there is no tolerance for inappropriate language or name-calling that is offensive to any of our community members. Remarks are required to be relevant to the motion under discussion. As a reminder, as well as we commence night five of town meeting, we want to bear in mind as we cast our votes, not only our personal interests, but also those of our community as a whole. As we deliberate, let each of us here tonight maintain an open mind, an open heart, graciousness when we disagree, and a healthy sense of humor, so that debate of this meeting will not be a source of division among us when our business here is finished this evening. Moving on to our agenda, we will be beginning with Article Four. It has been moved and seconded to reconsider Article Four. For this will require two-thirds vote to place it back on the floor. I would like to recognize Anne Sarah of Precinct One.
Hi, everybody. I didn't know I would be speaking first. I thought I would be speaking last. So I did send everybody an email today, although I think it only went out to a few people because I was actually responding to an email. My concern is not to lengthen the meeting nor to second-guess everything that this body does. My concern is that I think that today, I think that last, on Thursday, April 29th, we saw the effects of some of the language that was adopted in Article Four. And what happened after that article was a member of my precinct said there seems to be something wrong with the language, asked me to look at it, and indeed, what we found was that there does seem to be something with the language. Let's look at specifically some of the language in that article. First, it was, we saw on that evening that there were, I'm going to call them sync problems with the manner and the way that the vote is closed, both on V voter versus when the moderator closes the vote. And this caused confusion for this body. In the article itself, it mandates that the vote be shown, that the entire tally be shown to the body, the town meeting body, before the vote is officially closed. Now, using V voter or any other electronic system, we would need to go, we would need to, I think, carefully consider how to close the vote in the electronic voting system at some time that made sense with respect to when the moderator was also closing the vote. And I think that we, as a body, need to look at that language and need to look at how we would be using a V voter system. Let's not forget that in these other neighbors, neighborhoods, neighboring municipalities that have adopted this language, an electronic voting system, before they did so, they had a group of people, each one of them had groups of people sit down and discuss what are our needs. This is called use case, when you do any kind of engineering. What are our needs? Who are our users? What are their needs? Our users, you know, how are we? And then go through these kinds of scenarios. How will we close the vote? And this is one scenario that we've already seen that the language does not address. We've also have some language that requires, for example, it requires all votes to be given within 24 hours. I'm not so sure that our municipality is capable of that, and I think that that's going to be different for a different municipality. That's what happened here when we adopted the language of a different municipality without studying it ourselves. Another thing that I found on last Thursday night was the intense need to view the final version of an article or motion before voting. Now, that's not just viewing it on, let's say, WinCam or on my computer, which I think is important, but that's also having it embedded into the language of the actual vote. In other words, I want the electronic voting system to also record that final language. That is something that I don't think we are capable right now of doing, and I think that's an absolute necessity going forward. And another thing is that when I looked at the language, I found that the language was, it was sold to me, and I'm a huge proponent of transparency in voting. I actually think it's a very good idea to record the votes of town meeting members, and I was a yes voter on this issue, and I would have been fine, would have never even thought of this, given it a second thought, had it not been for the Thursday night melee. And what I found when I read the article was that it was not what I thought. I thought it was an article that allowed for electronic voting or authorized electronic voting. And instead, what I found, it's an article that defines all voting, all of it. How we're going to stand up, how we're going to sit down. It defines all voice voting. It defines all voting. And I'm uncomfortable with that language without thinking about this article more clearly. I found further that it allows 20 or 40 people to overturn the decisions of the moderator and how the moderator decides to conduct a vote. And that is, I think, precedent setting. I don't think people understood when they voted for this that they were setting new precedent in how town meeting sessions would be moderated and on the, and how the moderator will moderate those sessions. So what we really need to do, and I wish I had the language that I wrote today, but I don't, because I was trying to get set up here. But I think what we really need to do is have, I expect the select board, I'm going to move, if this motion passes, I'm going to try to move to immediately table this until the fall, for example, with the firm expectation that the select board would do what other municipalities did, and that is appoint a subcommittee to study the issue. And in that study, we'll have to look at our electronic voting systems, find these users, what types of things do these users want to do, make sure the electronic voting system is capable of it, analyze costs, and then craft language that is tailored to our town, not lifted from another town. And so I hope that you will understand that this is rushed, that we are setting ourselves up for horrible confusion in the fall, especially if we adopt hand-controlled voting pads. And I want you to know that back in the circle in 93, 94, 95, around that time, the very first time I had the word manager put in my job title was for a company, One Touch Systems out of San Jose, that actually does make electronic voting systems, including those touchpads. I know the kind of confusion that this can really introduce to a meeting session, and I'm imploring you to give us some time to do this right. I would say go ahead with this, but I don't think the language is usable. So please join me on tabling, on first revisiting the issue and then tabling the issue so that we can properly analyze it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sarah. Further on the question, do we have a recommendation from the Select Board Chair Susan Verdicchio?
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Thank you. The Select Board supported article, this article initially, and we do not have a recommendation on the motion to reconsider.
Thank you. Further on the question, Mr. John Miller, Precinct Six.
Yes, I, moderator Von Mary, members of the Select Board, members of town meeting and fellow residents. I speak on behalf of the more than 290 Winchester residents who in 2019 initiated this petition. It was the easiest 290 signatures ever collected at the dump. We didn't find residents who weren't interested in knowing more about how town meetings works. This matter was first scheduled for Springtown Meeting of 2020. By agreement among the Select Board, Moderator Haley and the proponents, Article Four was rescheduled to Fall 2020 Town Meeting. Well before last Fall's Town Meeting, the proponents worked closely with Moderator Haley and the town clerk, both of whom consulted with town council on the language that was put before town meeting last Fall. Moderator Haley's recommendation was to put the idea of electronic voting before town meeting with a requirement, if approved, that the proponents work with the clerk and with town council upon agreed language to bring to this 2021 Springtown Meeting.
Okay, get in.
Last Fall's Town Meeting approved Moderator Haley's suggestion, which included the concept of adding electronic voting. The article approved last Fall instructed the proponents to work with the town council and the clerk to bring a polished Article Four to this meeting. Since the spring of 2020, the proponents have studiously followed the process suggested by Moderator Haley in full cooperation with the Select Board, the town clerk, and with town council. The proponents and town council followed the process suggested and as instructed by town meeting last Fall. Town Council Nina Marcarrios developed Article Four, not me and not the proponents, which represents a change to our bylaws to allow electronic voting. Earlier in this very town meeting, more than two-thirds of the members of this body approved Article Four. The language is flexible. It describes the system for voting. Of course, it deals with more than electronic voting. It is the system for voting, and it is wrong to say that this inhibits the moderator in any way. She is still in command. The language is flexible. Voice votes and standing votes are still allowed. It would be wrong to not deal with that in this article. The language preserves discretion to the moderator. The 20 votes and 40 votes that Ms. Sarah referred to are ways that the body can suggest to the moderator how the body feels. It is not commands. It is discretion. The mechanics of voting has been simplified. We will spend less time on mechanics and more time on substance. We are the town's legislature. How we vote is now knowable to those who elect us. Article Four has made our actions knowable. Article Four moves us towards transparency and light. We want to keep the lights on. We want to encourage all residents to be more effective in their engagement with us and with one another. As to the suggestion that a use case should be made up, that is what you're talking about with respect, Ms. Sarah, is a custom application that will cost the town thousands and thousands of dollars. It's why Fastlane died a few years ago. It's why the main version of EZ Pass died a few years before that. We're not looking to reinvent the wheel. This is not an all-encompassing control of the moderator. It allows electronic voting. And to suggest that last Thursday has anything to do with the prospective use of electronic voting in a face-to-face meeting in the high school auditorium is not a good comparison. What this applies, this Article Four applies to is an in-person meeting in the Winchester High School, and what happened last Thursday is irrelevant. Now, the last point I would make is Section 3.9.2, subsection one, says the town clerk shall provide for the use of an electronic system. We are not wedded to V voter. We are not wedded to the company that Ms. Sarah used to work for. This is something that the town clerk and the town council will be in control of. I'm in the process of reaching out to other towns. I've suggested to the town clerk that we should join a cooperative purchasing arrangement to drive the cost of this and to drive the improvement of the software. So I don't see this as a big issue. We have followed the process studiously, as suggested by the moderator, in full cooperation with the Select Board, the town clerk, and town council. This wasn't rushed. There's nothing in here that is very earth-shattering. There's plenty of escape clauses if there's a failure in the system. This is just good government. And I hope you'll join me in rejecting the motion to reconsider Article Four. And we don't want to move back toward darkness. Let's shine a light on our activities. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd just like to remind town meeting members to please not use direct names of people of the meeting. Next, Ms. Pamela Corder, Precinct Five, please.
Hi. Thank you, Madam Moderator. I am in support of reopening this for the express purpose of then making a motion to postpone indefinitely until the Fall. I actually had inquired about electronic voting and being able to record our votes and have them be available to the community and to the residents who vote for us as town meeting members and as their representatives. I had been in favor of this for a long time, so this is a warrant article, and this is an issue that I fully support. I voted yes to put it into action, and I still support it, and I still fully support transparency and making us accountable for how we vote as representatives. That said, I don't think that the way that it is written, and I do think that it's relevant to what happened last Thursday, I don't think the way that it's written is, or last, actually it was last Monday, is complete. I don't think that it has enough language to make it robust, to stand up to things happening. I'm not saying that what happened this spring session would necessarily repeat itself, especially in a live session, but I do feel that it, what it did was it opened our eyes to the fact that there are a number of things that could go wrong with electronic voting, and that we ought to consider those things, and that we ought to write some language that makes this more robust, that makes it a system that we can all feel comfortable with, and we can all trust, town meeting members and residents. And I say that because it is important. It's important how we vote. We vote on important issues that, that impact how tax dollars are spent. It's a huge responsibility. It needs to be taken seriously. And just as important as making sure that our votes are recorded and then presented is ensuring that how these things happen are done well. One thing that's missing from this is correcting any results that may be in error. I know that when the results from V voter scroll across the screen, sometimes I don't have time to see where my name is on that and what my recorded vote is and whether or not it corresponds to what I did when I was clicking in V voter. And then it doesn't come back and go around again, so I have no way of verifying my vote. That's a concern, and that should be a concern for all of us. Is there anything in here that indicates that people can fix mistakes? There's no language that really addresses those kinds of things, and I think that we can spend the summer putting some thought into it and re-presenting this. It may be something that folks have been working on, but it's not something that a committee worked on. And having, having worked on warrant articles that made it into the book and really focused on details, it's amazing how something that is seemingly simple, when you first look at it, can be very complex. And in the case of voting on these issues, it's complex, and I think that we ought to take it seriously. I think we ought to give it the gravity that it deserves, and I think that we ought to reconsider this and put some time in with all of the people who have concerns and make this warrant article one that we can all feel comfortable and support and get behind so that everybody is satisfied. And with all due respect, Peter Haley is no longer the moderator. We have a different moderator, and that's not, that's not the end-all, be-all of how our town meeting works on the basis of former officials and what their thoughts and feelings and whatever express approval they had for something. That's not how town meetings should move forward. It should move forward on the basis of the merits of something. Thank you.
Thank you. Further on the question, Mr. Seamus Brady of Precinct One.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment. My main concern is just the ongoing delay. So I don't know if, I would worry if we simply delayed this towards the Fall, but over time, I've watched this be delayed again and again, and my concern is that it will, there will be reasons to delay it again in the Fall, and then we will be potentially in next Springtown Meeting, and there will be more reasons to delay it. And I think there may be great reasons to delay it. There may be not as great reasons to delay it, but my concern is that it will continue to be delayed for much longer than necessary, so I'm hoping folks will just think about that.
Thank you. Further on the question, Anthony Conti of Precinct Two.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Frankly, I'm at a loss to understand the objections to the language of the article as submitted. I frankly suspect that people may be looking at a different version than I'm looking at because we should strive for simplicity, not to overly complicate matters, which is, I'm afraid, what would happen if we send this to a committee. You know what they say? A giraffe is an animal put together by a committee. And the last thing we need is to overly complicate voting. There's very little that I can add to what the previous opponent of reconsideration stated, but I can tell you that this, this was not put together in a rush by one person. It was a joint effort between the proponents, the town clerk, the town council, who also represents the town of Lexington, that has successfully used this very much, very similar town bylaw for electronic voting for a good number of years. So I frankly don't see what the terrors that are supposedly viewed here, really, it boggles the mind. I just don't understand why this necessary enlightenment of our town as to the workings of this town meeting should be delayed any further, and I ask that we both know on reconsideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Further on the question, Mr. Paul Maganero of Precinct Six.
Yes, good evening, Madam Moderator. This is one of the main reasons myself and the other new members have joined this board because we've heard from neighbors about accountability and their lack of trust in the process and officials. Whether it be true or not, it's the perception and it's the reality. I think this is vital to gaining, gaining the respect and the confidence of the general public and our neighbors. So I would vote to not move this motion and stay where it is. We all must be accountable for our actions in and out of the session, whether it be in this meeting, on Facebook, or any other social media, but we must, we must be accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Further on the question, Amanda Lewis of Precinct One.
Hi, this is Amanda Lewis of Precinct One. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Can you hear me?
Yes, I do.
I guess I have a question to you, Madam Moderator. I am in favor of keeping this article. I do think transparency matters, and I would hate to suggest to residents that we are delaying that, and I would hate to see that delayed. But at the same time, I have noticed that, especially in this town meeting, some of the things that have come before us have been very iterative. They start one way and they change, and I do think, to Anne Sarah's point, it would be very, very helpful to have the language that's clear appear in V voter with, right above where it is we're supposed to vote. Because I think as, as things are changing and the conversation is moving swiftly, it's would be helpful and very clear to have that language be precise. I don't know if it's possible to somehow keep the article in place and add more precise language, but I would be in favor of that. Thank you.
Just to respond to that, just so everyone knows, the, the language will be available through your Zoom, and when screen share will be coming in. So your V voters for voting and your Zoom will be where the language is on the motions before you, and I will also be reading them in, so there'll be multiple points for you to access that language. We have a move the vote from Michael Rasu, pardon my, I pronounced your name wrong, of Precinct Four. Is there a second? Second by Seamus Brady of Precinct One. We're going to turn over to your V voter, and we are going to vote to consider moving the vote. It will require half majority and if, sorry, three quarters of the town meeting, two-thirds. It's going to require two-thirds of the town meeting to then move to the vote on the motion to reconsider. So if you turn your attention to V voter, if you vote yes, we will then go into immediate voting. If you vote no, we will continue the vote to reconsider. Currently in line, there are two members requesting to speak. One has already spoken, and so it would be their second time. If you turn your attention to V voter, it should be up there now. There are 127 in the affirmative and 31 in the negative. There are two-thirds in the affirmative, and the motion is adopted. We will now turn back to V voter again in a moment, and we will make, we will vote to consider, to reconsider motion for, Article Four. So town meeting members, if you turn to your V voter, you should have the reconsider of Article 4, which is to amend Chapter 2 of the Code of Bylaws in regards to electronic voting. For town meeting members, if you're looking for Article 4, it's in page 7 of your blue booklet. Requiring two thirds to pass. We have 43 in the affirmative and 119 in the negative. The negative has it and the motion is lost. Returning back to Article 20. Give us one moment. We're going to get the language up for you and get everything set for Article 20. Thank you. While everything is getting set up, I just want to remind town meeting members that the town clerk sent you each of the slides that we will be sharing on Zoom as well and the language of those motions as they go. So if you don't want to go back and forth, you do have that available in your email. It is moved and seconded that $23,368,155 be appropriated for the undistributed fiscal year 2022 budget, of which $23,368,155 is for expenses. Further on the motion, the proponent, Chair of FinCom, Mr. Enzo Rasionado.
Great, thanks, Madam Moderator. Good evening, everyone. I'm just going to share one quick slide when, if I, if I can, Madam Moderator.
Yeah, one second. We'll put it back up for the members after
Thank you.
Your presentation.
Great. So the, the undistributed line has grown over the years and now a pretty sizable portion of our overall budget. To give you an idea, undistributed as a line item now represents a budget larger than police, fire and DPW combined. So while the overall undistributed category grew by 4%, most of the increases were primarily driven by two line items and the two here in, in yellow up top. The first was health insurance, which represents the health plans for all current town and school employees as well as our retirees. This line item is growing at just under 4% is actually on the low side compared to historically what, what it has grown at and what we, we, we think it might grow at in the future. The other big increase driver was from contributory retirement, which is now approaching $6 million overall. This line item covers the pension plan mostly for our town retirees. And as mentioned previously, this line item will grow at what will become a standard increase of 8% annually as we try to ramp it up and get our pension plan, plan to be fully funded by FY29. So as you'd expect, with contributory retirement growing by 8% every year, while our revenues are growing at three, it, it will represent a larger and larger share of the overall budget and put more pressure on the other budget line items each year as we go. So one other line item to note here in, in yellow below is, is around OPEB, which is, stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. The OPEB budget was held constant at 350,000, but that's considerably lower than what is required to keep that OPEB liability balanced. This is something that is mentioned by FinCom every year. It's, it's, it's been out there for a while. As a result, this liability, which was at $225 million last year, will most likely continue to grow. And there's plenty of detail in the, in the budget book on both pension and OPEB. And again, a big area of FinCom focus for many years. FinCom actually presented the current status on OPEB and pension back in March to Select Board in detail. And the plan is for us to come back to Select Board with recommendations and options later this year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Recommendation from the Select Board from Chair Susan Verdicchio.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The Select Board recommends favorable action on this motion.
Thank you. Further on the question, going to town meeting members, now is the time to use your request to speak button. And as a reminder to all town meeting members, if you hit request to speak and submit it, you will get a note that says received. If you hit it again, you will get another note received, but it pulls you out of line. So you just need to hit it once and you can use the Q and A to talk to our deputy moderator to support you, to confirm you are in line. First in line is Dr. John Miller of Precinct 6.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm, I'm also on FinCom and Enzo did a great job and a great report on this item. I think, I believe FinCom is unanimous on this. I just want to mention one thing that we have worked very hard in FinCom this year to try to distribute what is, what is called undistributed and try to get down to a point where we know where these, where these funds in, in the various categories are actually assigned by department and et cetera. So the idea would be to get, to eventually come back to the town meeting with only general insurance and reserve fund left undistributed because most of these items that add up to $23 million can be distributed. This was a recommendation made by the facts committee 20 years ago and, you know, and I, for one, and I, I don't know how this will go, but I, I would like to see undistributed be a much smaller amount and the, the real costs of the various departments presented to town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Further on the question, Mr. Jeffrey Dean of Precinct 2.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. To you, to the appropriate town official, actually first thing, being very appreciative of all of our current and past town employees and all the effort that they've put in. But I noticed that the healthcare line item wasn't split between current and past town employees. And so I'm curious, you know, what the difference is of that most expensive line item in this category for current versus retirees? And then to the appropriate town official, what are we doing to manage this ongoing expense as it relates to the, the benefits that we offer that are essentially affecting the operations of the, of the future? So we're, we're paying for past out of the future and at some point that becomes unsustainable. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I believe Chair of FinCom, I would like to ask you that question of the healthcare. Do you know the difference, if you can split it between the current and the retired and what the plan is going forward?
Yeah, so we do have that breakdown and we have the detailed breakdown, but I think that retirees account for about 3.7 million of the overall $12.6 million budget. If that helps.
Thank you. Seeing no other town meeting members rise, we're going to turn to your V voter and we are going to take this into consideration. So town meeting members, the motion should be on your Zoom screen and then also your V voter is to do your vote. This vote is requires a majority vote. There are 159 in the affirmative, one in the negative. The affirmative has it and the motion is adopted. Moving onward to the next motion. Which will be the funded debt principle. You can hear the town clerk behind me. It is moved and seconded that $6,755,000 for account number 7110 funded debt principle be appropriated, of which $6,755,000 is for expenses, where $457,000 is from capital stabilization fund. $1,637,000 is from building stabilization fund. Proponent of the motion, Mr. Enzo Rasionado on behalf of FinCom.
Great, thanks. Thanks, Madam Moderator. The funded debt represents the principal and interest for the town's long-term debt. Total principal and interest, as you can see, are combined 11.5 million. And this is the same as that was, what was requested by the town manager. The, there was only one minor $34,000 change for two items that were found after the February submission on the interest side, or those were for the Lynch feasibility study and the transfer station engineering items. Thank you. Oh, actually, one, one more thing. I, to Jeff Dean earlier, I said 3.7 million. I actually read that way too quickly, so it's 2.7 million for the health insurance for the retirees. Apologies.
I just wanted to clarify, did you have a slide that you wanted to share on that?
I did not.
Okay, I just want to make sure we didn't supersede you. Further on the question, Representative of the Select Board Chair Susan Verdicchio.
The Select Board recommends favorable action on this funded debt motion.
Thank you. Seeing no town meeting members rise to speak. We will turn our attention to V voter. Town meeting members, just so you know, we're going to keep 30 seconds on it for this evening as well. So you have 30 seconds. Two thirds vote required. There are 162 in the affirmative, none in the negative. The affirmative has it. Moving on to the funded debt interest of Article number 20. It is moved and seconded that $4,784,320 for account number 7120 funded debt interest be appropriated, of which $4,784,320 is for expenses, where $176,411 is from capital stabilization fund, $411,375 is from building stabilization fund. Proponent of the motion, Chair of Income.
Great, thanks. Thanks, Madam Moderator. As I said before, this is the, the second motion for the overall funded debt for the interest portion. And the, the changes that I mentioned earlier around the $34,000 relate to this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Recommendation from the Chair of Select Board.
Select Board recommends favorable action.
Turning my attention to V voter, I see that there are no town meeting members in queue to rise, so I'm going to turn you back over to V voter. We're going to need one minute just to do the transition between since we're moving so quickly. Thank you, town meeting members. Voting is now open. Vote requiring two thirds with 164 in the affirmative, none in the negative. The affirmative has it and the motion is adopted. Moving on to the fiscal operating budget for capital of Article 20. It is moved and seconded that the amount of $1,555,000 is appropriated for capital projects, of which $1,365,000 is for personal and $90,000 is for equipment, of which $350,000 is from building stabilization fund. $835,000 is from capital stabilization fund, $200,000 from water and sewer retained earnings, $70,000 from cemetery trust fund and $100,000 is from free cash. Proponent of the motion, Chair of FinCom.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. As, as you, you pointed out in the, the motion language, this represents funding for various FY22 capital projects from capital stabilization fund, building stabilization fund, the water sewer retained earnings cemetery, and then there's the historic $100,000 allocation to deferred maintenance from free cash. Thank you.
There is a point of order from Colin Simpson of Precinct 5.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I would just like to have the, the numbers reread, please. I believe the moderator said the $1,365,000 was for personnel. And so if you would kindly read that again.
Thank you. Actually, we just got a, we just got heard from the comptroller as well. So I'm going to reread that and we're going to correct it on your screen as well. Thank you to IT Department. So moving, I'm going to reread that correctly. Thank you very much, Mr. Simpson, for pulling that out, pointing that out to me. It's moved and seconded that the amount of $1,555,000 is appropriated for capital projects, of which $1,365,000 is for expenses and $90,000 is for equipment, of which $350,000 is from building stabilization fund, $835,000 is from capital stabilization fund, $200,000 from water and sewer retained earnings, $70,000 from cemetery trust fund and $100,000 is from free cash. I see a hand is raised from our comptroller.
Just a real quick note, Madam Moderator. The expenses and $190,000 is for equipment. I had notified Mary Elman. I'm not sure if she got my text. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go further on the question, the Chair of the Select Board.
Select Board recommends favorable action. Select Board recommends favorable action.
Moving over to V voter, seeing if there's any questions or requests to speak. Seeing none at this time, let's turn your attention to V voter. Voting is open. Just so town meeting knows, it's a two-thirds vote required. And the language is on your screen on your Zoom. Along also with Wind Cam, they also are showing it as well. Two-thirds vote required, 165 in the affirmative, none in the negative. The affirmative has it. Moving on to Article 21, Water and Sewer Enterprise, requiring a majority vote. It is moved and seconded that $10,740,608 be appropriated for the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, of which $1,481,100 is personal services and $9,259,508 is for expenses, and that $1,573,199 be included in appropriations from the general fund for indirect costs and be allocated to the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, raising a total of $12,313,807, of which $7,60,184 is from water and sewer receipts, $5,253,622 from the property tax levy in accordance with Chapter 110 of the Acts of 1993. Proponent on the question, Mr. Enzo Rasionado of FinCom.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. As you mentioned, this is the standard article for funding our Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. It largely remained unchanged from what was submitted by the town manager, except for one last-minute change of adding $156,000 in debt that was inadvertently left out of the first budget iteration. Thank you.
Recommendation, Chair of the Select Board.
Select Board recommends favorable action.
Turning my attention to V voter to see if there's any requests to speak. There's a request to speak from Pamela Court of Precinct 5. I'd like to recognize you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm in favor of passing this motion. I just wanted to make a respectful request that there perhaps be a way for education on how the Water and Sewer Fund and dissemination of those funds works to help our town and our town meeting members understand this, as it's a little bit complicated. And MS4 mandates from the state on stormwater runoff is kind of mixed into the to the Water and Sewer Budget. So I just would respectfully make a request that perhaps a public hearing or some sort of education session is done to help us all understand how this works better. Thank you.
Thank you. To the Chair of the Select Board, can you confirm, or if you'd like, we can also do it at Fall Town Meeting, that you can do a public informational session regarding the MS4 and the Water and Sewer Information?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I have talked with the town meeting member and other people have suggested this, and I think this would be a good idea and we could do that. Do a public, for town meeting members and the public informational session or informational hearing on the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund and the MS4 permit requirements.
Thank you very much. Seeing, oh, one moment. Okay, seeing no other town meeting members rise to request to speak, we're going to turn your attention to V voter to vote on Article 21, the Water and Sewer Enterprise. Town meeting members, please hold. We're going to stop and clear the vote. There is a scripner's error on your screen. It should be $7,60,185. So we're going to hold and redo the vote. I'm going to reread it and just, you know. I'm getting the clearance that I do not need to read it in, so we're going to proceed as it is. It's on your screen and it's a scripner's error of $7,60,185, not 184. So if you can turn your attention to your V voter and cast your vote. Thank you. Requiring a majority vote, 163 in the affirmative, none in the negative. The affirmative has it. And we are going to move on to Article 22, the Recreation Enterprise. It is moved and seconded that $2,104,613 be appropriated for the Recreation Enterprise Fund, of which $1,399,613 is for personal services and $705,000 is for expenses, and that $352,524 be included in appropriations from the general fund for indirect costs and be allocated to the Recreation Enterprise Fund, raising a total of $2,457,137, of which to fund the budget, $2,116,850 from recreation program receipts, $290,287 from the town's tax levy, and $50,000 retained earnings. Proponent of the motion, Chair of FinCom.
Great, thanks, Madam Moderator. This is our standard article for funding the Recreation Enterprise Fund. There were some changes with this compared to what the town manager budget had due to changing assumptions with regard to COVID impact. Obviously, those assumptions changed weekly for a while during the budget period around what the impact might be on the various recreation programs, as well as how busing would be coordinated with the schools. But the final numbers were reviewed and approved by town manager as well as by Nick Cattolfi, the head of Winchester's Recreation Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Recommendation from the Select Board? Chair?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Select Board recommends favorable action.
Thank you. Further on the question, Mr. Chris Nixon of Precinct 1.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm just circling back to our discussion at Fall Town Meeting. You'll recall, we pulled out the field marshal position and there was some support for putting that back in the operating budget. So through you to Mr. Rasionado or perhaps our Rec Chair, are we funding this position moving forward in the FY22 budget?
Mr. Rasionado, are we funding the position? For the field marshal in this?
Yeah, I would, I'd actually ask the, I believe it's in there, but I'd like to confirm with the town manager, Lisa Wong, if possible.
Thank you. Town Manager Lisa Wong, could you please confirm if the field marshal is funded in the Recreation Enterprise motion?
Actually, I do see our Recreation Director here. I know we've made some last-minute changes, so I just wanted to confirm with Nick if he could answer that question.
Hello, everyone. Yes, we did allocate $10,000 for that position in the Recreation Budget.
Thank you so much for joining us. Seeing no other town meeting members rise, let's turn your attention to V voter and we will cast our votes for the Recreation Enterprise. Majority vote required. There are 157 in the affirmative, one in the negative. The affirmative has it. I would entertain a motion at this time. We are complete with our yellow sheet, but I would entertain a motion at this time to take Article 8 from the table as requested at the time upon the completion. Is there a second? We're not going to see the second for a second because I moved too quickly for the technology, so we're going to give the technology a moment to finish scrolling and then we will be moving to see if there's a second to. Just so everyone knows, the deputy moderator was the one who moved it. The second is from Michelle Pryor of Precinct 4. Thank you so much, town meeting, for your patience on that. We would like to go, we return back to the debate. Ms. Susan Verdicchio of the Select Board.
Select Board voted earlier this evening to recommend indefinite postponement of this.
Is that a motion that you're making?
Yes, I moved that it be indefinitely postponed.
Is there a second? There's a second? And to the Select Board, would you like to provide any more information to town meeting?
I believe Mike Bettencourt, who was the proponent of this, would have more to say on the thinking here.
All right, great. Mr. Bettencourt of the Select Board, please.
Thank you, Madam Moderator and Ms. Verdicchio. I think that we've been getting a lot of questions from town meeting members about this. We plan to bring this back in the fall with a little bit more clear idea for town meeting of what the surcharges would look like and town meeting's role in setting that surcharge and also appropriating money for that. I mean, essentially, this would be setting up a sustainability stabilization fund. And so it's not something that we do lightly. The Select Board does have the authority to set the building permit fees and increase that to generate revenue for this position. As I mentioned before, we have voted that and we're working for a July 1 implementation of that. So we'll still be able to generate the same kind of revenue, but I think that we'll be able to come back to town meeting in the fall with a little bit more clear idea and reduce some of the confusion and certainly reach out to precinct captains and do some precinct meetings on this. It's a big article and so we would ask town meeting to give us a little bit more time to put together a little bit more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Further on the motion, De'Abgerius of Precinct 8.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Through you to the Select Board. My understanding is that you have decided to put a surcharge and my understanding is that surcharge has to go through the general fund and it cannot be allocated to a specific purpose other than through action by the state legislature. And through you, I would like to ask that of the Select Board and also if town council could weigh in on how the Select Board can use that money until the state legislature approves any sort of a home real petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bettencourt, would you be able to answer the question on the surcharge being allocated to the general fund?
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. Through you to Mr. Gerius. And I see that Town Council, Mina Macarius, is going to be right there behind me and maybe can clarify a little bit more. And these are the kind of the questions that have been kind of tying us up here and we want to make sure that all town meeting members are, have a good understanding of this. So as we were looking at the Sustainability Director position and it wasn't being funded through this budget cycle, we were trying to figure out ways to generate more revenue to encourage FinCom to support the Sustainability Director position. This was one of them. They agreed that while the money would be still sitting in the general fund, they would segregate it and earmark that funds as a separate line item. So we could see what was being generated in addition to the existing building permit fee and we could apply it to the Sustainability Director position or potentially Energy Coordinator position or whatever we thought was connected to the building permit fee. So, and I'm happy to yield to Mr. Macarius.
To our town council, could you provide more information on the Select Board and the use of the money gathered through the fees and what is allowed?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Mr. Bettencourt is right. The funding would go in the general fund. It would be subject to appropriation by town meeting. However, I think the intent was to, as a matter of budgeting, track it so that we would know, the town would know how much money was being raised.
May I have a follow-up, Madam Moderator?
Yes, you may.
So my understanding then is that this money would go to the general fund, but it would not actually be used to support the activities of the building department. My understanding is that you have to tie surcharges for things to activities of the department. And if it's just sitting in an account waiting for an eventual allocation by town meeting, it seems odd. Through you to whoever would choose to answer that question.
To town council, could you provide more clarity on the fee and how it ties to surcharges to the department?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The, sorry, we're getting. Thank you. The fee, for a fee to be legal, it would have to have a relationship in terms of the amount of the fee related to the expenses of the department. However, where the fee goes, it is typical for a fee to go to the general fund for appropriation. And it is, the case law is clear that towns are not restricted in having fees be a one-to-one ratio to expenses. They can plan for future, for future expenses, including in this case budgeting for building-related expenses such as a sustainability effort.
Okay, thank you.
Further on the question to indefinitely postpone, Jackie Welch of Precinct 5.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yep, we can hear you. Thank you.
Oh, okay, good, good. I have a couple of devices going, so I apologize. I just wasn't sure. I just wanted to be. I just wanted to be super brief. I have so much respect for the Select Board and FinCom, but I just thought Town Meeting should have some clarification through the moderator. As I understood it, the Town Meeting did vote to have funding for the Sustainability Director. And as I understand it, the Select Board is requesting indefinite postponement of Article 8, which I totally understand, but the last few moments, there's been a discussion about if there is a surcharge designated for the Sustainability Director at some point, perhaps the next Town Meeting. You know, some of the mechanics of that, but I thought we would just voted, I think, three nights ago for that to be funded through the FinCom article. And so therefore, isn't this now... And I don't mean this in any way disrespectful to anybody. Maybe there's additional need for some other sustainable effort. I have no idea, but I just think Town Meeting should understand clearly that if this position is already funded, then if there's further consideration in the next Town Meeting about having additional fees for building permit for a Sustainability Director, it seems kind of redundant unless... Because it seems like now that's already been taken care of, this Town Meeting. On top of all of that, it sounded like the Select Board was indicating a couple nights ago that on its own, and I'm understanding that this, it has the authority to do this, it already raised the rates for some other purpose. So I guess here are my specific questions. One, I understand that Article 8 is being proposed for indefinite postponement, but I would just like to know, on behalf of Town Meeting, isn't its actual purpose already taken care of because of Town Meeting's vote to fund the Sustainable Director position? Two, I guess my second question is, just for clarification of Town Meeting, since all this would have happened during Town Meeting, is it correct that Select Board has already raised the rates for building permit, which I understand it has authority to do, but just so Town Meeting's aware, as well as just the general public, are those funds being pegged to something in particular, such as some other sustainability effort or something else? I just wanted some kind of clarification on, it seems like, three separate actions that have happened, and I mean this respectfully, just so we're all educated. Thank you so much. Take care.
Thank you to Chair, actually to Mr. Bettencourt, I believe. There's a handful of questions before you. The first one is, is the purpose of Article 8 taken care of at this point then and unnecessary?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Through you to Ms. Welch. No, I mean, so the issue with the Sustainability Director position that was funded from free cash, that is, you know, not recurring revenue. So that, you know, we're looking for additional revenue to fund the position long-term. So I think that's what FinCom was working on with us because, you know, the Select Board has an operating reserve policy that says we don't spend free cash and recurring operating expenses. So that's what we're trying to avoid. We wanted to include this in the budget for a long period of time. And, you know, as the Planning Board members know as well, the Assistant Planner position was funded in the budget and there wasn't money for it and it got cut out the next year. So that's what we're trying to avoid. So it's, you know, kind of ironic in a sense that we're trying to have a sustainability position and efforts actually sustainable and we're struggling with doing that. But, you know, I think a lot of the confusion, a lot of the questions can be avoided if we indefinitely postpone this and we bring it back in the fall and answer some of those questions and we'll see some of the revenue that we have generated through the building permit. So the building permit activity funds, you know, multiple other departments as well. So it's not just that department. The money is raised, it goes into the general fund and it's appropriated to different related departments. So it's, you know, we were working with the Finance Committee to come up with a solution that seems to, that we thought worked. And, you know, I think we just need to work a little bit harder and make it a little bit more clear for Town Meeting. And happy to have Mr. Roshanato also respond if he would like.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bettencourt. Mr. Roshanato, you might be able to also answer the second question as well. The Select Board fee was raised under, for the building permits, under their authority. Are the funds being pegged to other sustainability efforts or the sustainability position?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So I think there was a couple of things that we ended up doing over the course of the last several meetings, right? The first one was, we funded the Sustainability Director position using free cash, as Mr. Bettencourt just pointed out. So that was a $80,000 position. The first year, we have $35,000 in grants, so we needed another $50,000 in free cash this year. And, but then that grant goes away and that position keeps going. So it becomes a recurring revenue. We also, the Select Board increased the fee on the building permits by $50. And I think the estimate was that there's, you know, plus or minus 1,000 of those every year. So that'll add $50,000 a year to our general fund revenue. So that'll blunt the blow, if you will, of that additional, adding that additional head count somewhat, but not completely. So it's, those are two different things and as far as the budget is concerned, they're two independent things. We're not setting that money aside where it's just going into the general fund, but ultimately it all gets paid out of the same place.
If I could just have a quick follow-up, I just wanted to thank both of you guys for that. Madam Moderator, I'm sorry if I am not allowed to follow up, but I just...
Follow-up question?
Yeah, yeah, just very quickly. But I think that's super helpful and I totally have respect for the Select Board's authority. So this is in no way questioning that. I just think it's helpful for Town Meeting to know kind of more specifics, like what the FinCom Chair just explained, because it sounds like we did fund it indefinitely. So contrary to what I was understanding, and maybe this was my misunderstanding, what Mr. Bettencourt was saying, this, it wasn't what the Town Meeting voted on for the Sustainability Director this year and this Town Meeting a couple nights ago was not just for one year. It was for indefinitely. It's just that in for future, for meeting those expenses, as I understand it, Mr. Bettencourt is saying that by adding to the general fund from the surcharges through the Building Department, it will ultimately be part of the same bucket and help to fray that amount. And if I'm understanding that correctly, I certainly have no other follow-up and don't need either one of these fine gentlemen to comment further. I just think it's important for Town Meeting to know what we did or didn't do. And I gratefully appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Further on the question, Mr. Roger Wilson of Precinct 1.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Through you to the Select Board. Want to understand what they actually did with respect to the building permits. Did they raise the minimum to $100? And the additional surcharge, a fixed portion? Or did they, is it somehow variable?
To Mr. Bettencourt, can you provide more detail about what the vote of the Select Board entailed to the building permits?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Through you to Mr. Wilson. And just a reminder, and we are recommending indefinite postponement on this. I mean, and some of that was that we wanted to, you know, really give Town Meeting the ability to move through the rest of the articles this evening to finish. But happy to answer the question. We did raise a flat fee of $50 to the building permit fee, which will be implemented July 1. There probably are going to be some tweaks that need to be made between now and then, but that's kind of how broadly we looked at it, but it may change. So, and what we might do is actually exclude some of the smaller projects that come through. So, you know, we'll look to try to generate some revenue to offset the Sustainability Director position, you know, because really what we'll need to do in order to fund the Sustainability Director in FY '23, we'll have to cut other positions somewhere else. So that's our concern. So, and I use the example of having to cut the Assistant Planner last year and, you know, we don't want to get in the habit of creating positions that we can't fund long-term. And when we fund positions through free cash, that's what we get.
Thank you. We have a move the vote from Mr. Paul Mangano of Precinct 6. Do we have a second? Seeing a second from Prisata Kalabi of Precinct 1. If you can turn your attention over to V-Voter, we will be making a vote to consider moving the vote that will end all debate. And then if it passes, we will go to vote on the indefinite postponement. If it doesn't, it will return back to the debate. There was one speaker in line. Voting has opened on vivo. Filing two-thirds vote, 135 in affirmative, 27 in the negative. The affirmative has it. If you can give us one moment, we're going to scroll through your precincts and then we will return back to the vote to indefinitely postpone Article 8. Town Meeting members, in a moment, you're going to see something pop up on your screen. Please do not vote. Please hold. We're just need to do some clerical work behind the scenes. Please wait, Town Meeting members, to get in there to vote. Give us one minute. All right, Town Meeting members, it should be correct on your V-Voter screen. We are voting to consider indefinitely postponing Article 8. 30 seconds, voting is open. Requiring a majority vote, 146 in affirmative, five in the negative. The affirmative has it and the motion is adopted. Article 8 is indefinitely postponed. To Town Meeting members, we're going to take a five-minute break. We will return about 9:05 PM and we will begin with Article 23 remaining. We have Article 23, 24, 29, and 30. And hopefully we can get through all of it this evening. I would like to do that so that we can complete our Town Meeting for the spring. So enjoy your break and we'll see you again in five minutes. so that we can complete our town meeting for the spring. So enjoy your break, and we'll see you again in five minutes. Welcome back, town meeting members. I hope you enjoyed your mini-break. We are returning onto Article 23 of the Personnel Board. It is moved and seconded. Actually, just before, I'm going to do some procedures, actually, before I read that out. So what we're going to do for the personnel is they are going to do their presentation, and then we are going to do each motion individually as a town meeting. But the presentation, the recommendations will be right off the bat for all eight motions that will be before you on Article 23. You should have your booklet. We will be sharing those motions as we move through them on your Zoom screen. They will also be available on WinCam, so you should have all that, and I will also be reading that. So we will start with motion number one. However, with that, we will get the presentations for all eight at once. So beginning, it is moved and seconded that the town's compensation plan be amended effective July 1st, 2021, as recommended by the town manager and the Personnel Board, is set forth in Appendix A, proposed classification of positions on Schedule 3 PT Compensation Plan, Schedule 4 Management Schedules, Schedule 5 Miscellaneous Positions Compensation Schedule, and Schedule 6 Recreation Compensation Schedule are grades fiscal year '22, effective July 1st, 2021. Please refer to your Article 23 revised document that was emailed and posted online May 10th, 2021. You will also see the language on your screen. Proponent of the question, Chair of the Personnel Board, Peter Shemitz. This will be a video, so give us one moment while we get it up and running.
Good evening. I'm Peter Shemitz with the Personnel Board, and I'm here to present the motions under Article 23, the Personnel Board's articles. An overview of the motions, there are eight total with this article. Motion one covers a bunch of changes to positions. There is removals, reclassifications, changes of title, and the addition of several positions. And Motion two covers the funds necessary to pay for them. Motion three and four are paired together. Motion three is a salary adjustment to the non-union salary scales, and Motion four is the cost of covering Motion three. Motion five covers an addition of single step to three schedules, Schedules two, three, and four, and six covers the changes associated with that. Motion seven covers the change in the sick time buyback policy under the Town of Winchester Personnel Guide, and Motion eight covers the costs associated with those. So let's go into detail on each of these motions. Motion one. So Motion one, this year, we have a number of changes. The first set of changes involves Schedules three and four. Schedule three is the professional technical compensation levels, and Schedule four is management. Under Schedule three, we are deleting Assistant Town Clerk. That will show up at a later schedule, and we are deleting the Payroll Benefits Coordinator, and we are adding an Account Specialist, and moving, as I said, moving the payroll specialist, the Payroll and Benefits Coordinator up to, from PT 12 to PT 14. Under Schedule four, we are adding the Assistant Town Clerk that was deleted off of the Professional Technical Schedule. This represents a change in the duties of the Assistant Town Clerk, which now includes a number of managerial functions. Many of these coming from the added stress of running the elections over during the time of COVID and issues related to COVID. And finally, there's a title change. We've added Public Health to the Nurse Manager. Last town meeting, we moved the nurse from the Professional Technical up to the Management Scale, but dropped the public health from the name. So there's no ramifications beyond the name change there. In addition, so this is a discussion of some of the issues. The Assistant Town Clerk has been reclassified. The Payroll Benefits is reclassified within the Comptroller's Office as a recognition of the change in or the increase in her duties. The Account Specialist position was created within the Comptroller's Office to deal with overseeing internal budget reconciliation. Due to a number of the new government programs that have come in under COVID, the internal budget reconciliation has been left without really somebody to do it, and so they've brought in Account Specialists to take care of that. In addition, we see a number of changes within Schedule five and six, and these all relate to the Recreation Department. And what you're seeing is in many cases, there's a bunch of positions which are actually moving up a single grade. This reflects a need to actually increase pay in order to fill those positions. And then in a number of cases, you're seeing title changes in which the new titles now represent, are more in line with A, the change in duty, or with how these positions are in general referred to. It's just over time that the names of these positions in general have shifted. And then finally, is at the very top end, what we're seeing is the creation of several positions which in the past have been filled by contractors. So the Recreation Department has been unable to fill certain program level jobs, so people who are running and managing overall programs like tenants and things like that. They've been unable to bring people in within the price scale that was available as a direct hire. So they've had to bring people in as contractors. Now, by bringing people in as a direct hire, the people who we're bringing in don't have to fund their own insurance. They don't have to provide their own equipment. And in the end, by creating these higher cost levels and only paying them for when they're there, we are in fact dropping the cost of many of these programs. Now, one thing you should understand about the Recreation specific articles is that they are all paid for within the cost of the program. So these, none of the cost changes that are reflected with these schedule changes will in fact affect the budget that we're voting on tonight. So Motion two deals with all of the changes that come about under Motion one, and every, all of the changes have been already essentially baked into the budget that we voted in Article 20, except for the Controller Officer's changes, which is about $5,300, and the Town Clerk's department, which is $2,000. Okay, Motion three is a salary adjustment for the non-union personnel. These will affect Schedules three through six. This represents a 3% increase and is effective July 1st. And this is a recognition of the fact that we are having trouble hiring people into non-union positions, or, and/or actually promoting people out of union positions. So what we're finding is that in many cases, we just can't get anybody to take these jobs. And so we are increasing the cost, we're increasing the actual salary for 3%, and we expect that this will change the outcome of a number of our hiring decisions. Motion four is the appropriations related to the costs of Motion three. So the total projected increase over what we voted in Article 20 is 279,791, and the sources of those funds are listed below. The distribute, and I'll just discuss that in a second, but the distribution of those funds is shown in your motion book. So 228,272 is raised and appropriated within the FY '22 budget. Now, under normal circumstances, that money would come out of the unallocated wages account, but in this particular case, it would have gone in and then immediately come out. And so we're just discussing that it's raised and appropriated. $10,248 comes from the Water and Sewer Retained Earnings, and $41,271 comes from the Recreation Retained Earnings Fund itself. Motion five is the addition of one step in the non-union compensation schedules, two, three, and four. So for Schedules two and three, there will be an added Step 12 above the current maximum Step 11. Each, both of those Step 12s will be 3.5% above the existing current high step. And in the management schedule, there'll be a new added Step 17, which will be 2% higher than the current Step 16. Again, like all of these, and I should have mentioned it along the way, Personnel Board will recommend favorable action. Motion six is the appropriation to, associated with Motion five. The total cost of this motion is $28,430. The funds are distributed as shown in the motion book. 2,000, 200, sorry, $26,724 is raised and appropriated in the FY '22 budget, and $1,706 comes from the Water and Sewer Retained Earnings. This motion does not affect Recreation. Motion seven is an increase in the sick leave buyback for non-union personnel. So this is a change in the Personnel Handbook, which will change from $125 a day to $150 a day, the amount the town pays to buy back excess sick leave, and that's excess in excess of 90 days. The town will buy back any excess sick time that people on Schedule two, three, and four have at the rate of a $25 increase per day. We recommend favorable action on Motion seven and then Motion eight. The final motion is the cost associated with that. So the total cost of this motion is projected to be $12,589. The funds are distributed, again, as shown in the article, and the funds come from a raised and appropriated to the FY '22 budget, is $11,843, and out of the Recreation Retained Earnings, $746. Again, town, the Personnel Board recommends favorable action. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Further on the question recommendation from Enzo Rasionado of FinCom.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. FinCom voted favorable action nearly unanimously on all of the motions in this Article 11-0, except for Motion three, which was 10 to 1. So we did review all the motions in detail, found that all the changes, including the new position schedules, the increases, and the cost impacts, cost impacts that resulted were appropriate. We did in particular review Motion three heavily, and as FinCom has said in past nights, many other employee groups and unions have received large increases in recent years, and that has driven a lot of our budget increases, especially in FY '22. So we did look at that historical context for this group of employees, and we thought the 3% increase was appropriate, given that non-union municipal employees have received only 1.5% increases in the last two years prior, which is much lower than the other employee groups. So we were also sensitive to some of the difficulties in hiring that were mentioned by the Human Resources Team. Also, the overall increases in these motions were in line with what was expected in our long-term plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Recommendation from the Select Board, Chair Susan Verdicchio.
The Select Board unanimously voted to recommend favorable action.
Thank you. Mr. Shemitz, I see that you are, would like to speak. Is there further that you would like to give on your article?
Yes, please. I recognize that I went in and rerecorded it, but I didn't add one other line item for Schedule three of PT Compensation Plan FY '22 in Motion one, and that was to add a PT 15 Mental Health and Wellness Social Worker that will be in the Police Department. So that's an addition that should be there.
Thank you. To town meeting members, I read the motion. I noted that was posted online May 10th. That includes this addition, and it is also, will be on your screen as well shortly. That is to include the mental health wellness for the Police Department. Further on Motion one, town meeting members, if you'd like, you can use your request to speak. Seeing no town meeting members rise, we're going to turn our attention to V voter. All votes under Article 23 will require a majority vote. Majority required, 142 in affirmative, three in the negative. The affirmative has it, and the motion is passed. Moving on to motion number two. It is moved and seconded that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $7,300 to the following Municipal Personal Services Budget as listed below to fund wages increases effective July 1st, 2021, as a result of classifications of positions on Schedule 3-PT Compensation Plan and Schedule 4 Management Schedule. For more information, you can also refer to your packets, and you can refer to Article 23 revised document that was emailed and posted online May 10th, 2021. Town meeting members, you have received recommendations on Articles 23 from the proponent along with FinCom and Select Board. I will turn my attention directly to V voter to see if anyone rises with any request to speak. Seeing no town meeting members rise, we are ready for the question. Turn your attention to V voter, and we will have it on your screen momentarily. Thirty seconds, please. Majority acquired, 153 in affirmative, none in the negative. The affirmative has it. The motion is passed. Moving on to Article 23. Motion number three. It is moved and seconded that Schedules two, CS Clerical, three, Professional Technical, four, Management, five, Miscellaneous, and six, Recreation of the Town's Compensation Plan, be amended to reflect cost of living wage adjustments for the municipal non-union employees of the town as recommended by the Town Manager and the Personnel Board, is set forth in Appendix B fiscal year 2022. Non-union municipal compensation schedules proposed July 1st, 2021. Non-union municipal compensation schedules proposed July 1st, 2021. Please refer to Article 23 revised document that was emailed and posted online May 10th, 2021. Further on the question, Sam Allison of Precinct three. That was just a task, she's testing me. Seeing no other town meeting members rise, it looks like we are ready for the vote. Turn your attention to V voter, and we'll get the vote before you. Majority vote required, 150 in the affirmative, none in the negative. The affirmative has it, the motion is adopted. Moving on to motion number four. It is moved and seconded that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $279,791 to the following fiscal year 2022 municipal personnel services budget as listed below to fund a 3% cost of living wage increase for municipal non-union employees effective July 1st, 2021. $228,272 shall be raised and appropriated. $10,248 shall be transferred from water and sewer retained earnings. And $41,271 shall be transferred from recreation retained earnings. Please refer town meeting members to Article 23 revised document that was emailed and posted online May 10th, 2021 for more depth. Turning my attention to V voter. Seeing no town meeting members rise, please turn your attention to your V voter. Majority vote required, 155 in the affirmative, none in the negative. The affirmative has it, and the motion is adopted. Moving on to motion number five. It is moved and seconded that Schedules two, CS Clerical, three Professional Technical, and four Management of the town's Compensation Plan be amended to reflect addition of one step, the end of each grade on each schedule as recommended by the town manager and the Personnel Board as set forth in Appendix C at its step on Schedules two, CS Clerical, Schedule three Professional Technical, and Schedule four Management. Compensation schedules effective July 1st, 2021. Please refer to Article 23 revised documents for more depth. That was emailed and posted online May 10th, 2021. Turning my attention to V voter for a request to speak. Seeing none in line, we will turn your attention to V voter to cast your votes. Give us one moment, and it is up. You have 30 seconds. A fun fact for town meeting members, the reason we are still doing 30 seconds, because some of you may be wondering why we reduce it. Some town meeting members are actually using Wind Cam to watch the meeting, and there is a delay, so they need the 30 seconds to be able to stay on track with us, as that's the way they prefer to participate. Majority vote required, 151 in the affirmative, two in the negative. The affirmative has it, and the motion is adopted. Moving on to motion number six of Article 23. It is moved and seconded that the town appropriate the sum of $28,430 to the following fiscal year 2022 municipal personnel services budgets as listed below to fund the addition of one step on Schedule two, CS-Clerical, three Professional Technical, and four Management of the town's Compensation Plan effective July 1st, 2021. $26,724 shall be raised and appropriated, and $1,706 shall be transferred from water and sewer retained earnings. Once again, please refer to Article 23 revised documents that was emailed and posted online May 10th, 2021. Turning my attention to V voter, see if anyone requests to speak. Seeing no one rise, turn your attention to V voter and cast your votes on motion number six. Majority vote required, 149 in the affirmative, two in the negative. The affirmative has it, and the motion is adopted. Moving on to motion number seven. It is moved and seconded that the Town of Winchester Personnel Policy Guide be accepted and approved with minor revisions as followed in your blue book. Please refer to Article 23 revised document that was emailed and posted online May 10th, 2021. Turning towards V voter to see if there's any request to speak. Actually, we need to wait one minute, finish scrolling through the precincts. And there is no one in the queue, so we're going to turn back to our V voter to cast our vote on motion number seven of Article 23. Majority vote required, 140 in the affirmative, three in the negative. The affirmative has it, and the motion is adopted. Moving on to Article 24, we have a revised motion before us for our consideration. It is... All right, moving to, sorry, we skipped over, I was getting excited. Motion number eight from Personnel Board. It is moved and seconded that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $12,589 to various fiscal year 22 municipal services budgets as listed below to fund increases in the cost of benefits revised by the proposed Town of Winchester Personnel Policy Guide. $11,843 shall be raised and appropriated, and $746 shall be transferred from the recreation retained earnings. You can refer for more information to Article 23 revised document that was emailed to town meeting members and posted online at Winchester.us, May 10th, 2021. Turning my attention to V voter to see if anyone has requested to speak. Seeing no one rise, we will turn our attention to V voter and cast our votes on motion number eight. Majority vote required, 152 in the affirmative, two in the negative. The majority has it, and the motion is adopted. Town meeting members, we have a revised motion for Article 24. Originally in your booklet, you had three motions. Motion two and motion three has been removed, and motion one has been revised. We're going to get the language up before you. I will also read it into you right now. It's moved and seconded that the town vote to appropriate $100,000 from free cash for Board of Health COVID-related expenses included, but not limited to testing, professional services, overtime, supplies, and materials. Further on the question, the proponent, Town Manager Lisa Wong.
Thank you, everyone. This originally had three motions, so I'm just going to go over all three. The first motion, we are asking for $100,000. This is an amendment from the original number that is in the book for COVID-related expenses to deal with the pandemic starting July 1st. There have been some last-minute changes, because guidance just came out today from Governor Baker, D.C., and various state agencies. We're still absorbing that, but we believe the impact of that is that we no longer need motion two or motion three, which is related to, motion two is the cleaning of the schools, and motion number three is related to the building department. We do believe that there will be some ongoing impacts of the pandemic, and that there will be needs for education, for testing, for ongoing vaccines, boosters, overtime for contact tracing, supplies and materials. This is a decrease from the original amount, which was over 300,000. We do believe we need a lot less, but we do believe we still need some funding for this.
Thank you very much. Further on the question recommendation from Chair Susan Verdicchio.
Select Board actually didn't have time in its meeting before town meeting to vote a recommendation on this, but I dare say we did support it before and recommended favorable action when it was a higher amount. We're happy that we are now able to draw less from free cash.
Thank you. Further on the question recommendation from FinCom, Mr. Rasionado.
Thanks, Madam Moderator. This, this, this one has moved a lot, around a lot since February. I mean, the original town manager budget, we had almost a million dollars in this item, which included significantly more testing, as well as the higher additional cleaning contracts for the schools and town buildings. So, FinCom did, didn't have time to revote it either. We did vote favorable action on the amended motions for 250,000, but obviously, a lot has changed since less than a month ago, so we understand the changes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Turning my attention to town meeting members, Mr. Brian Vernalia of Precinct four.
Madam Moderator, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Thank you very much. Through you to the Finance Committee, were the, the presentation you gave about free cash, did that take into account this reduction in the amount of free cash that will be needed to be used? And if not, do you have a projection where our free cash will be based on not having 300, and I don't even want to do the math, about $500,000 less in free cash being used?
Thank you, Mr. Vernalia. To the Chair of FinCom, could you provide more information if your presentation included the original numbers that were provided in this article?
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Or death of that?
Yeah, yes. The, these numbers changed, I think, half an hour ago, or half an hour before the meeting, so they definitely included the original number. I think, you know, with some of the changes we had with the Sustainability Director getting added back in, I think the operating reserve is still short. Like, you know, it's hard to know how much, how much we'll get out of that $50 fee, but let's say somewhere between 1.2, 1.3 million dollars for FY24. So, I, I think, you know, this is going to be a one-time benefit. Like, I think we reduced it by, you know, almost 500,000, so that, that'll, we're still in the hole for 800,000 that we have to find over the next two years. So, I'd hardly say we're out of the woods, but we're, I, I think this is definitely, definitely will, will be a positive impact to the overall operating reserve calculation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mike. Thank you, Mr. Michael Galavan of Precinct two.
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Just a question, is there, with what's happened in Washington, is there any chance that even these funds would be reimbursed from someone?
Thank you. To the Town Manager, is there any chance that these funds might be able to be reimbursed through the federal government?
The answer is, is potentially yes. The CARES funds keep changing, but the comptroller might be able to answer. She sent me an email earlier today saying that there could be a way to pay for some of these expenses in, I think, this calendar year, but this motion does cover through the end of the fiscal year. That, I'm not sure if we can rely on that, but certainly if it is, that's our first choice to go through. Federal stimulus funds could and will likely cover these expenses, except town has not made any decisions towards using any of those funds to pay for this. But there are certainly two other choices that we have for covering some of these expenses.
Thank you. Further on the question, Mr. Paul Maganero of Precinct six. I'll fix my audio.
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. Through you to the Town Manager, am I correct in assuming, because these are hypothetical expenses in the future, and these numbers are just revised, as I heard less than an hour ago, if these expenses don't come to fruition, does the money stay in free cash? Thank you.
To the Town Manager, could you provide more information about if the money's provided and where that comes from in terms of free cash?
Sure. If I could first defer to the comptroller, and then can answer any questions that are still remaining.
Thank you very much. I'd like to recognize Stacy Ward, the comptroller for the Town of Winchester.
Hi, thank you, Madam Moderator. What we end up doing when we have a free cash vote like this is we'll reserve the funds in a special article until we decide we don't need them any longer, and then we'll close them, and we can close it back to the general fund. It won't automatically close to free cash at the end of the year, just based on the presentation. So, we would have to spend it or decide that we don't need it to then close it at a future town meeting.
Thank you very much. Ms. Karen Connolly of Precinct three.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Through you to the Town Manager, how much federal and state aid did Winchester actually get related to COVID? How much is, is left to be received? And how are we actually allocating all of that money? So, I'm looking for a number in totality if such a thing is available.
To the Town Manager, could you provide the town meeting more information about how much money we've received in state aid and the allocation of that money to date?
Sure. I think it's more appropriate that we refer to the federal aid as well. So, there has been $2 million that's been allocated to Winchester for COVID response through the CARES Act. Originally, that deadline was for the end of this fiscal year, and has been extended to the end of the calendar year. So, we'll cover expenditures, expenditures through December 31st, 2021. In addition, the American Rescue Recovery, American Rescue Plan Act will be providing approximately $6.6 million for a very long list of potential COVID responses, including what is in here. I believe through, I think we have to designate the expenses until the end of 2024, but I think we can close, close out those funds through 2026. So, those expenditures have a longer shelf life.
Thank you. Further on the question, Ms. Joan Miller of Precinct 6.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And through you to the Chair of FinCom, this has been moving quite a bit and, you know, it's all good news for us in looking at the positive test rate in the state and the vaccination rate that's ongoing. And, you know, the governor's changes and announcements today are a reflection on that good news. And I just wondered, to be honest, I was always puzzled why Winchester needed to be testing and when it's so readily available all over the place for free. And I just wondered, given we don't really know what this amount should be, maybe it should be zero at this point, and then the Town Manager can come to FinCom for a reserve fund transfer if needed. And isn't that a better approach, given that we clearly don't know what this number is? And I just don't see why town meeting members would need to vote this forward and just let the government function as it needs to.
Mr. Rasionado, would you like to take that question about why it's in the town's best interest to provide the money at this point?
So that's certainly an approach, and that's certainly an approach that we discussed when we were covering this article. And again, we voted this a month ago when it was, I think it was originally 585,000, and then we had initially cut it to 415,000. So I think the thought at that point, Ms. Miller, was that that was too big for the reserve fund to cover. So the reserve fund really wasn't a good option, given the entire reserve fund for the year is supposed to be 400,000. So obviously now the amount is much smaller, so, you know, that's certainly a possibility, but we didn't really dig into it at the time because the size was so much bigger a month ago.
Thank you. We have a motion to move the vote from Michelle Prior.
Madam Moderator, sorry. I just, given that response, can I have a motion to amend?
There's a motion currently sitting on the table to move the vote?
Well, I was still getting my answer. I'm sorry. I think I was listening to the Chair of FinCom.
So, I'm sorry, what would you like to do?
Well, you may have to help me with how best to do this, but I'd like to propose a motion to amend, either to move this amount to zero and propose that the funds could be, you know, approved as needed with a reserve fund, or I guess it's a motion to, you know, indefinitely postpone. I'm not sure which makes more sense, so I defer to you.
It would be to indefinitely postpone it if you're turning it to zero.
All right, that would be great. But I guess with the caveat that the Town Manager can go to FinCom to get funds if it's needed.
That wouldn't be part of the motion. The motion would be to indefinitely postpone this article. Is that what you'd like to do, Ms. Miller?
Yeah, thank you. That would be great.
There's a motion to indefinitely postpone Article 24. Motion number one as amended. Is there a second? Second from Seamus Brady of Precinct 1. Town meeting, we now move to debate this. I'm going to clean out the V voters, so there's no one in line. And then we are now moving to remove until there's no one there. All right, now we are debating to indefinitely postpone Article 24. Further on the question, to indefinitely postpone, Mr. Tony Conti of Precinct 2.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I rise to support the motion to indefinitely postpone. The town meeting members must remember that the reserve fund is always there, and as the town Finance Committee Chairman has stated, they would have considered this if the amount of funding before them had not been so high. Now that it has been reduced, they have a reserve fund of some $400,000, and the Town Manager can always seek funding up to that amount out of the reserve fund. So there's no need for town meeting to appropriate $100,000 for this, the possibility of having to use these funds when the Town Manager always has the option of going to the FinCom and requesting funding to cover unanticipated expenses. So I wholeheartedly support this motion for indefinite postponement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Further on the question, Mr. Mariano Goluboff of Precinct 5.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. As a former Chair of the Finance Committee, I say let's vote no on indefinitely postponement. The reserve fund is not meant for expenses that are anticipated like this. It's intended for emergency or for previously unanticipated expenses. FinCom is appointed, it's not an elected board, town meeting is elected. This is an anticipated expense. We know we will have costs related to COVID. We might not know exactly how much, but as the comptroller said, if we don't spend it, we come back at the next town meeting and we vote to put it back into the reserves or free cash, just like we've done so many times in the past. So we are elected to town meeting to make appropriations. We shouldn't kick the can to an appointed board when the reserve fund is meant so that we don't have to call an emergency town meeting because we have an emergency expenditure. It's not meant for this kind of thing.
Thank you, Mr. Goluboff. We have a move the vote from Colin White of Precinct 2. Second from Brian Vernalia of Precinct 4. We will turn our attention to V voter screen, and we are currently voting to move the vote. If it passes, we will go to vote on the motion on the table to indefinitely postpone. If it fails, we will continue the debate on whether we would like to indefinitely postpone Article 24 or not. One moment, give us a second while V voter gets up. Should be up on your screen. We'll do 30 seconds. There are 131 in the affirmative, 21 in the negative. The affirmative has it and the motion is adopted. Turning now immediately back, once a moment, we'll scroll through and set it up. You turn your attention to V voter, you will see the current motion that is before us, Majority vote required with 48 in the affirmative, 98 in the negative. The negative has it and the motion is lost. Returning back to Article 24 as presented, further on the motion, we will need one moment to cycle through all the precincts before V voter will be able to take requests to We have a move the vote from Michelle Prior of Precinct 4. Do we have a second? Second from Nick Bogovich of Precinct 8. We're going to move the vote for Article 24. You turn your attention to V voter, we will get that up in a moment. It looks like there is one person in line who has already spoke. Just so town meeting knows, there's one member who is in queue who has spoken on this motion previously. We are returning our attention to V voter to determine if we would like to end debate and then move the question. If you vote yes, if you vote yes, we end debate. If you vote no, we continue the debate on Article 24. 30 seconds. Two-thirds vote required, 131 in the affirmative, 21 in the negative. The affirmative has it and the motion is adopted. We will now officially vote on Article 24, motion number one as revised, and currently on your screen on WinCam and also on Zoom. We're going to scroll through all the precincts first, and we will then get it up for you All right, turning to V voter, you will see that for the motion for Article 24, number Majority vote required, 121 in the affirmative, 32 in the negative. The affirmative has it and the motion is adopted. Moving on to Article 29, the tax levy. It is moved and seconded to authorize and direct the Board of Assessors to use $151,863 of free cash for the purpose of reducing the fiscal year 2022 tax levy. Proponent of the article, Town Manager, Ms. Lisa Wong.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This is a standard article that is typically at the end of especially a budget town meeting in order to balance the budget. So this is a way to capture motions from free cash or into the stabilization funds for the purposes of balancing the budget. So based on your votes at town meeting, this is the amount that we need, $151,863.
Thank you. Recommendation from the Chair of Select Board, Susan Verdicchio.
Select Board recommends favorable action.
Recommendation from FinCom, Chair, Mr. Rasionado.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. FinCom recommends favorable action.
Thank you. Turning my attention to V voter, request to speak to see if any members of town meeting have any questions or comments. Mr. Dr. John Miller, can you please confirm if you have your hand raised to speak towards this article before us?
No, I had my hand up to speak on the last one, and I was trying to be recognized, but I was unsuccessful.
Thank you. Seeing no town meeting member rise, we will turn our attention to V voter to take our Majority vote required, we have 142 in the affirmative, 2 in the negative. The affirmative has it and the motion is adopted. Moving on to Article 3, it is moved 30. It is moved and seconded to indefinitely postpone article due to no such work before the town meeting. And that is regarding all the committees. As soon as we finish scrolling through, we will go directly to V voter to vote on Article 30 to indefinitely postpone. to vote on Article 30 to indefinitely postpone. One moment, Town Meeting members, the language on V voter needs to be updated to indefinitely postpone Article 30. The language on this slide for V voter is corrected. We are voting to consider indefinitely postponing Article 30. Majority vote required, 143 in the affirmative, 4 in the negative. The affirmative has it, and the motion is adopted. The business before us Town Meeting appears to be done. I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn and dissolve Spring Town Meeting 2021. Seeing no one object? Oh, do we have a second? Oh. It looks like all of Town Meeting is ready to adjourn.